Okay, we're ready to start. Counselor Twill, you want to line there? City Hall to Counselor Twill. City Hall to Counselor Twill. No, not there. Okay. Just send him a text there. We don't want to, we want to make sure he's part of the meeting. You there now, Counselor Twill? Are you there now, Counselor Twill?
Yes.
Okay, he's there. Okay. Thank you, Jackie. Okay. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation called order. And just to clarify, last meet, last night's meeting that was on the Capitol Budget went into recess, so that's a separate meeting. That will be followed up tomorrow when we come out of recess, just for clarification. Declarations of conflict of interest. Counselor Duran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Yes, I'm in conflict of the Hidden Valley Development. My son-in-law and my friends are here, so I'll have to step out. Thank you.
CAO Ellen, do you have the resolution? Is that number five? I think so. Yeah, well, he'll know when it does come up. Page 106. Do you see it there? Okay, just go up there. Okay, number three. Sleepy Hollow is number four? No. Hidden, Hidden Valley. Number three. Okay, and just looking at the agenda, just under procedural bylaw, again, I just want to remind councilors that Section 37.2, speaking to the question, no member shall speak more than twice to the question without a majority of the vote of those council members present. If we take a vote, members shall not speak more than five minutes, and if rises for a second time, it's three minutes. Okay, so approval of the agenda. I need someone to move the approval, and it's Counselor Ramsey, second by Council Deputy Mayor Yankoff. Oh, did you have a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Last month, Counselor Twill had asked for a legal opinion on discussing reports. And under the MGA, I think you just, you had asked the, our legal team to give a legal opinion back. So I never heard about the legal opinion.
Nor did I. We didn't get it back yet.
So 30 days, you don't get a legal opinion?
Not always, but we'll find out. But if you go back to 37.2 in the procedural bylaw, speaking to the question doesn't mean it just has to be a resolution. Speaking to a question could be a report. That's, that's, that's a report is a question. That's...
I understand, but so if our meeting in Water and Sewer didn't mention anything, you wouldn't allow someone to ask a question? Like I have a number of questions I like to ask, say Public Works. So I could, I could ask them?
Yeah, in two questions. That's why you group your, in your first question, all the questions you want to ask. Then if you come up a second time, just group your questions. And it's just, Counselor Duran, it's just to expedite some of the reports. That's all it is. It's not to tell councilors to sit down. It's just, I think if you come prepared, and I think most of us do, that you can group those questions all into one five-minute section or three-minute section.
Thank you.
And we will get an opinion on that too, sir.
Just, can I, can I follow up?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Duran for bringing that forward. And as you know, Mayor Brown, this is near and dear to my heart, having the ability to be able to represent your constituents in an open, transparent, and accountable manner. So I'm glad to see that we're not going to be, if I got, if my interpretation is correct from what you just said. So we're not going to be restricted as to bringing issues to the forefront on behalf of our constituents.
Yep, but Counselor Twill, if, let's say, for example, deputy mayor presents her planning report, that's a question on the floor, and it says under Section 37.2, speaking to the question, the question at, at the table or on the table is the report. Then when she follows up with resolutions, that's the second, that's a question also, where we question the validity of the resolution or the validity of the report. But Counselor Twill, a lot of us do come prepared, and as you know, yourself included, just consolidate your questions into the first question within five minutes, and then you have a second chance under three minutes.
Yeah, under the report.
Yeah.
Under the report.
To the report, to the report.
Pardon, pardon me?
When Planning Department presents, or the Planning Chair of Planning, Development, and Heritage presents her report, that's one report, that's one question. That's a question to the report. But you have two questions that you can ask. Five minutes...
Under, under the report.
Correct. And then when you get to the resolutions, you get another five minutes plus three minutes.
Yeah. That's, that's fine. Just, just, okay, so good. Just so, so we're not restricted. That's, that's all I wanted.
No, no, it's open, openness, transparency, accountability.
Yep, no, that, that's fair. And again, I want to thank, I want to thank Counselor Bob Duran for bringing that forward. I know Bob and I discussed it. And, you know, we, we agreed that, you know, we have to have that, 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 that ability to be, be able to represent our constituents. So that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ramsey.
Yeah, this is, this is not what we discussed last week. I thought, Your Worship, I, I thought if it's not in the monthly report, you just can't go outside the...
Five minutes, three minutes?
No, like I, the way we understood it last week is that if I have, have my, my report there, I, sorry, I'm just trying to think here. If I have my report there, well, you're not allowed to ask questions that are not in that report. Is that true or false?
Yeah, that's, that's what we decided in the last meeting in February, that the report that's on the table, that's being questioned, it deal with the report. And it's the same with the resolution. The resolution is quite specific to whether it's planning, development, heritage, finance, administration. Stick to the report, and that's what we discuss. That's, that's parliamentary debate, guys. That's, you know, we...
No, I guess...
Yeah, no, no, just one sec, Counselor Twill, just one sec. I have a couple of people lined up here. Counsel McKay.
Yeah. I wanted to clarify too, is that we, if we are wanting to debate or bring up things that aren't included in the report, that would be a notice of motion for a later time or vetted through the committee. It's not something we bring up on the floor. It has to be in the report or in the resolution for discussion.
That's what we, we discussed last, at the last meeting, yes. And it's no different at the committee levels too, the standing committee levels. As you know, as Chair of Public Works, you have to try to steer some of the various opinions to a common, common ground. Counselor Beck. Could I just make one point here? The reason I ask you to stand is that when you stand, you have the floor. No one else can stand. That's the purpose of standing. It's a parliamentary procedure in the Legislative Assembly, Parliament candidate. That's why we do it. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I think what Counselor Twill, if I recall this, when he requested the legal clarification, was that he wanted to discuss things other than what was in the report, to represent the constituents with his own questions that were not relative to. So I think that's what he was asking here again today. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what the legal clarification that we were looking for, not, there was an interpretation that was given to stick to the report, to stick to those comments. I think where the, the conflict, for lack of a better word, came about was that Counselor Twill wanted to discuss issues other than what were included in the report. I think that's what he was seeking the clarification on. It's not on the time limits, the five minutes, three minutes, whatever it is. It's a matter of moving the agenda forward and sticking to the business that we have here. And that's what was being questioned or challenged, if I recall the exchange from the previous meeting. So that, I think, is the clarification that still has to be done. But I think for here and now, I think for, for, for our purposes, what the understanding is until there comes, you're saying, Your Worship, that we stick to the report, we comment on the report, and if it's in the report, we address it. If it's not in the report, we don't address it.
Yeah, or it's brought up as a notice of motion.
Until such time as we get a different clarification, that is the presiding ruling.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, correct. Now, no, Counselor Matard, it's just Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Worship. That is exactly what the clarification I was looking for. And I think that's exactly what the ruling we were trying to get on, because I would like to have made comment tonight on something that I'm not seeing in the report. So if you're, we're having some consistency here tonight and saying that that is what is going to take place, then that's not what you started out to explain. I think I was starting to get confused there as to, okay, we can talk about issues outside of what's in a report or a resolution. So we just need to make sure we're on the same page, one way or the other here.
No, just to clarify, five minutes first time, three minutes? No, 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 let me just finish. And it's on the question on the floor. So if the report's on the floor from planning, development, that's what we discuss. We, we, we went through this last month. That, to me, is done. It's now, what is a question? A question is either a report from the committee chair or a resolution that's on the floor. Counselor Twill.
Yeah, no, that, that's not what I understood. If I have a question under, under planning, for example, that's not necessarily in the report, and, and is, is important to my constituents, then I should have the freedom to be able to bring that issue to the forefront.
Yeah. Now, what you should do is write an email to the Chair of that committee, and let the Chair deal with it, with it at the next standing committee for Planning, Development, and Heritage, Finance Administration, Environment Sustainability, Water and Wastewater, Standing Committee. That's where it goes. Counselor Twill, you've been around here long enough that the report itself deals with the contents or the information in the report or in the resolution. It'd be the same thing at the Legislative Assembly. You deal with the contents of what's in the report or what's in the bill being questioned or debated in the House of Legislative Assembly or the Parliament candidate. That's, that focuses the debate on what we're here to discuss.
Well, you know what, that, then, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, that limits the role of a city councillor, being able to bring the issues to the forefront, so that under, under the spirit of openness, transparency, and accountability, and, and where, where the residents can, can watch the meetings and see that you're truly representing them in an open forum. So I don't know who made the ruling, Mr. Mayor. This was done arbitrarily or unilaterally, but there's nothing, and all my times in being a member of the City Council, I, I have never been subjected to, to, to that type of, that type of procedure. And I totally disagree with you.
So it's, it's, it's a ruling from the presiding officer, presiding officer in the chamber is...
So you made the ruling. You made the ruling. Okay, I told, okay, I want it on the record. That's fine. I totally disagree with you.
Okay, good. So let's move on.
Yeah, move on.
Now, we do have draft minutes, and if you go into your package, they're at, on pages 251, 259, and 264. They came in after the planning. It was just a, an error on part of putting together the, the package. So if you want to just check them out, they're on, if you use the digital form, 251, pages 251, 259, and 264. Yeah, just a minute. From public planning meeting January 23rd, 2024, regular monthly meeting February 12th, 2024, special meetings February 27th, March 4th, 2024. So that's the sets of, so if you see anything that's... Missions, additions, comments? Can I get someone to move the minutes? Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Any issues? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Now, we're doing the raise the hands because one of the councilors is missing. That's why we're not using the automated or electronic voting. Business arising out of the minutes, January 23rd, February 12th, February 27th, March 4th, 2024. No business arising? Okay. I will turn it over to our Chair, Standing Committee for Planning, Development, and Heritage, Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good evening, everybody. So the Planning and Heritage Committee and all the other subsidiary committees have met many times this month, so I'll quickly go through them. Design Review didn't meet since February. Heritage Board has not met. The Planning and Heritage Committee met on the 13th. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee met on the 20th. The Planning Board met on February 21st. Planning and Heritage Committee met on March the 5th. Planning Board also met on March the 5th. Planning Board also met on February the 13th. We have eight resolutions and three first readings. And if anyone has any questions on my report, I will do my best to answer. Or if there's anything you want added for the next agenda for the various boards and committees, I'll happily add those to the next agendas as well. So, thank you.
Questions in the report? Counselor Justin...
I have a question.
Yep, just one sec. Counselor Justin Matard.
So is this the opportunity then to get something added onto the next planning meeting or no, as you just indicated? Okay. To the Chair, I would like to know if we could get an update on the Park Street Community Action Plan, along with Resident Task Force that was indicated as part of the permit issued to the province on that. So again, I can ask you for an update on that. So can you get that, please, added to your, to your next meeting? I didn't see it in the minutes here.
Absolutely, Counselor Matard. We will add that to our next Planning and Heritage Committee meeting, which I know that His Worship has added that already for the next meeting, so that we can keep continuous update on that. So, yep. And if you want some updates prior to that, we can also send you off an email and include all of council on that. You're welcome.
Counselor Twill.
Yeah, along the same, same logic there from Counselor Matard. My question is, the task force, who is representing the city of Charlottetown on the task force? I'd like to know who's there and what exactly is the mandate of the task force? And is it the same as the community group that overseen the outreach center on Houston Street? Is basically the same players? Because from what I understand, the hired gun that the province brought in, Mrs. Donnelly, is no longer going to be with the task force. She's leaving at the end of March. So again, I want to know who the players are, what the mandate is, and, and who from the city of Charlottetown is on that, on that task force? And what exactly do they do? And who are they actually representing?
Deputy?
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor Twill. So to, to my knowledge, as of yet, this task force that the province was planning to create has not been created yet. It's my understanding they're working on their terms of reference. So at this point, there are no representatives from the city of Charlottetown. But I will bring this back for, to our committee with, hopefully with a more detailed update for the, for the next time we meet. So thank you for your question, Counselor Twill.
Okay, just a follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Second question. Go ahead.
Yeah, and it's regarding the Park Street relocation. Has, has it been nailed down in terms of how many police officers this, that the provincial government has committed to the city of Charlottetown, whether it's two, four, or six? We keep banging those numbers around. We've got no commitments on paper. There's no memorandum of under... on paper. There's no memorandum of understanding. And I just haven't seen any proof whatsoever that a commitment that was made verbally, I have seen nothing in writing, nothing formally. So when is that going to come back to council so that we can look at the memorandum of understanding?
Thanks, Counselor Twill. I think we can bring that back with the report next time around as well. I know there was a lot of discussion around the six officers for two, four, and six. So how about we'll take that back to Planning and Heritage Committee, get a full report, and bring that back for all of council, so it's clear and well documented so that we're all clear on that. Does that work?
Great.
Thank you.
Motion number one. Do you want to go with the first motion? Resolution?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that council approves the proposed phasing plan to complete the city's official plan, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Any questions? Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. Resolution number two?
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that council approved the request for major variance for 24 Lower Malpec Road, PID 696989, to increase the maximum permitted height for a proposed apartment building in the C2 zone from 15 meters, 49.2 feet, to an average maximum permitted height of 19.7 meters, 64.5 feet, in order to allow for a five-story apartment building to be built on the subject property, subject to the future development agreement.
Just a question.
Counselor Twill?
Is this the Hidden Valley development?
No. This is 24 Lower Malpec Road, which would be the Queens Arms intersection, where George Basset had his Queens Arms motel.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Question's called. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. Next one. So for the public record, Counselor Duran is in conflict, so he is leaving the chamber.
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that council approved the request to amend Appendix A, the official planned future land use map of the city of Charlottetown from low-density residential to high-density residential, and that council approve the request to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, from the low-density residential single zone, R2S, to the apartment residential zone, R4, for Phase 3 at the Hidden Valley subdivision located west of Malpec Road, being a portion of PID 1047562, to allow for future multi-unit residential development consisting of apartment dwelling units in the form of 10 separate apartment buildings, approximately 600 units total, to be subdivided into 10 lots.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. I've spoken to many of the residents of Ward Eight, close to Hidden Valley, and I'm here speaking on behalf of them. And I'm asking for council to consider a deferral of this resolution based on some of the following issues. The residents realize the city, we are in a housing shortage. They're not against the development, but are asking that the development be done right when it is completed. The city's increased by 3,000 residents from 2016 to 2021 and continues to outgrow our housing needs. The request for the rezoning of PID 1047562 encapsulates Phase 1, 2, and 3. If we rezone past this here tonight, there's no guarantee that the high density can't take place in Phase 2. Phase 1's already full, from what I understand. Phase 2 still has vacancies. There's nothing stopping them from putting a high density in Phase 2 on the opposite side of this stream. So I'm asking again, defer the resolution until a portion of the PID is separated from the new plan and a new plan presented. Currently, the green space being presented is using a portion of Phase 2 across the stream. What will this look like after the PID is separated? It's not going to be as big, and when you take out that buffer zone. The environmental assessment, from what I understand, was also completed for R2S development. I don't see anywhere in the package here that a new environmental assessment was done for specifically Phase 3 portion for high density. And there also does not appear to be a storm waste management plan. Can we get a commitment from the city for sidewalks or active transportation trails? I'm going to use, for an example, Alina Court. They were built without sidewalks, insufficient parking. There's cars parked on the street. City had to go put up no parking signs to keep people off the street, and there's no safe place for people to walk here. So we're asking for a sidewalk or a trail along here for this new development. The green space allocated for this PID is utilized in the 50-foot buffer zone on each side of the water course. It's a no-touch zone. It needs to be looked at after Phase 3 has its own PID number. Infrastructure must match the housing developments. Without adequate services, infrastructure, and supports in place, residents of Charlottetown will continue to struggle to grow effectively. All amenities are vital for the community to thrive. The residents are asking for a commitment from the city and the province to ensure intersections are safe, safe walking and cycling along this busy highway. So again, I'm asking for a deferral. And one more note, and I'm not sure, question, I guess, for the planning department. When I go through the letters of support, or, sorry, the chair?
Counselor, could I just, are you putting a deferral on the floor?
Can I finish my sentence?
You, yeah, but you put the deferral on the floor.
I'm asking of the letters, 11 of the letters in the report are either from businesses three and a half kilometers away, or they don't live in the 100-meter area of where the letters were mailed out to. So I am asking for a deferral on the grounds that I just mentioned.
Okay, so just before you sit down, you need a seconder. I need someone to second the deferral. Counselor Twill, you want to second the deferral? Is he still there? Counselor Twill?
Yeah, I'm here.
Did you want to second the deferral?
Did you ask any other member of council?
Yes, and they said they didn't do anything. Yea or nay?
I'll move ahead to the discussion on the resolution, see if we can get some of the questions answered. But just.
Okay, just before we do that, no, I just need to get that deferral. Counselor McKinnon did ask the chair about some issues. Chair, Deputy Mayor, do you want to answer them or do you want to defer them? You want to defer? Okay. We'll defer to David Gundrum and Laurel Palmer Thompson.
Yes, your worship, through the chair. There was a number of questions put forward. A lot of those issues have been addressed in the report. The environmental issues, we did, the developers did have an environmental specialist come in on the initial phases. The subdivision was looked at, the whole area that was proposed to be developed. That is correct. It was R2 zoning at the time. But when the environmental specialist comes in, they're looking at the wetlands on the property. They're looking at the type of grasses. They're looking at areas that need to be retained, maintained. So, I mean, we will be working with the developers ongoing, if this is approved, to make sure that mitigative measures are put in place, to make sure that the buffer zone is retained. The developers have also consulted during this process with the watershed management group that's active in that area. They have given support to the developers. That was included in the planning package. The parkland, in relation to parkland, this has gone through the Parks and Rec Committee for the all phases of development, and it was the direction of the Parks and Rec Committee. And when it went to council was to take a linear park system along the buffer zone because of the type of tree species that was there. There's also a parcel of land that's also been deeded for parkland that would accommodate a playground area. As far as sidewalks, there was an area that was designated, that was set aside. The province asked the developer for additional land along the road corridor to provide for future accommodation of sidewalks and active transportation trails. So all those issues have been looked at during the planning, during the rezoning process, to set us up for when we're actually dealing with the permits in the future. So when the developer comes in to apply for subdivision, and then later on for building permits, we'll be looking to make sure that those processes are in place and those things have been properly allocated to the city. That's the process we follow for any subdivision. That's not unique to this development. So we would do the same with Montgomery Heights. We would do the same for Sandalwood subdivision. A lot of that stuff is handled through the subdivision review process, and stormwater management is one of those things. We wouldn't require a stormwater management plan at the rezoning phase. We would require that when we're going through subdivision approval, and that's an engineered plan. Thank you.
So Counselor McKinnon, it's your second time. Do you want to just wait for some other comments? Do you wish to, like Counselor McCabe is, or do you want to speak now?
I'll speak.
Wrap it all up.
Yeah, no, I'll wrap it up.
Thank you. No, no.
So if I speak to it, Counselor McCabe can't?
Yeah, she can, but if you want to just listen to others, but you're free. Go ahead. Thank you.
You mentioned Phase 3, like environmental assessment was completed in the initial phases. I believe that it's going to be a different effect on that water course with high-rise buildings. The water coming off from the roofs, coming off from the parking lots compared to what would be with the single-family dwellings. Parks and Rec, yes, it says in the report that they are allowing for trails to go through the buffer zone. That's a provincial issue. If you're going to put parks or put trails through a buffer zone on a water course, it's Provincial and Environmental Protection Act. Parks and Rec Department here can't, doesn't do that. Sidewalks, the province took 10 feet. That's for widening of the road. Nothing, there's no commitment for sidewalks or trails. That is for the widening of the road, as per the report. And you made reference to Montgomery Heights and Sandalwood. Neither one of them, to my knowledge, have a stream running through them.
Yes, your worship, through the chair. The province did ask for additional road corridor along Malpec Road. Just so council is aware, when there is a road corridor, the road corridor is always wider than the travel portion of the road, and the reason for that is to accommodate other services, whether it's an active transportation trail, sidewalks, infrastructure such as electrical, water and sewer. So the road corridor is already a specific width. They've asked for additional width to accommodate road widening and active transportation. The buffer zone requirement, we have various, we have various wetlands within the city that have trail systems around them. Andrews Pond is a good example. The Parks and Rec Committee works with the Department of Environment on that to put walking trails within those areas. I'm sorry, what was, there was another question you had?
Widen the road.
Yeah, I did, I did address that one.
The Phase 3, the runoff from Phase 3, the environmental assessments. I'd like a more recent environmental assessment completed.
Yes, the environmental assessments for Phase 3. So there was an environmental assessment done. I believe the developers are still working with Don Maynard, the environmental scientist that did Phase 1, 2, and 3 originally. There, when we deal with the subdivision process, we will be dealing with stormwater management. That's always dealt with at the subdivision review process. This is basically to secure the zoning so that they know that they can proceed with this type of development. Once the zoning is secured, then they will proceed with the subdivision application, and we would be requiring those studies at that time. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe?
Thank you, your worship. I guess I'll ask the chair the question, and she can answer, get clarification. So Counselor McKinnon indicated that Phase 2 and Phase 3, once, if this is rezoned, it kind of parcels into one parcel. So does that mean that with the development that can still happen in Phase 2, that they can construct apartment buildings in that space, or is that just specifically for Phase 3?
Thanks for your question, Counselor McCabe. I think I'm going to have Laurel answer it. I can take a stab at it. The answer is, I believe that at any point, the developer could come back with the new, if the zoning is approved, and ask for changes. But I'm going to ask, I'm going to get Laurel to complete the answers to your question.
Deputy, just part of that, is this whole development one PID number? Phase 1, Phase 2? Now, I'm talking about what's up with the R2s. Is this all one PID, or is it a couple of PIDs?
Yes, your worship. For the most part, it's one PID. There was one smaller PID that was accommodated within that, but it's PID number 104752 that we're dealing with tonight. PID numbers don't change until ownership changes. That's the way the land registry system is set up in the province. So until the developer transfers land to another owner, the PID will not change.
So again, my question would be, with this rezoning change, if there's lots still to be developed in Phase 2, are they able to then construct what they're looking to construct in Phase 3, which is multi-level apartment buildings?
Yes, your worship, through the chair. Phase 2 has not been touched. The zoning still remains the same for Phase 2. Phase 3 is the only portion of the land that's been rezoned, and that is on the opposite side of the stream in the buffer zone, adjacent to Malpec Road. What's been approved for Phase 2 is lower-density development, and that's on, that will not change.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Yeah, just in general, as it relates to this application, I'm certainly at a high level in support personally of the densification and the change that's happening within our city and the development that is ever evolving. And I'm just wondering, on this zoning change, if it's approved, and then the next step, obviously for the developers, I guess, would then go back to planning, and then in a development, in a development permit, and if I've got the language right, is it possible for planning to, how specific can it get in terms of its requests, in terms, as it relates to infrastructure? I'm thinking active transportation and sidewalks. Can they, can that be, can that be written in? And then just another, another part of that. I'm just wondering, with this project, if the developers get to where they're trying to get to, does some of the infrastructure requirements that have to go around and support it qualify for any of this housing accelerator fund money that's on the table? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thanks for your question, Counselor McLeire. I don't believe that the housing auxiliary funding would be, would qualify for this development. But what would, when you asked about active transportation and sidewalks, I believe the way that Laurel Palmer Thompson described this is that if, once a development is being developed, then the needs are there, and the needs analysis is done, and then the sidewalks and the active transportation happen. They don't happen before the development. They're driven because of the increased development, if that answers your question. And if there's anything that you wanted to add to that, Laurel, feel free.
Laurel?
Yes, your worship, through the chair. One thing I should clarify is currently the- One thing I should clarify is currently the city doesn't have road profiles or standards for sidewalks. Public Works Department is working to change that. At one time, we did not require developers to construct sidewalks. Currently, that is the requirement of the city to provide sidewalks within neighborhoods and that's why when we're dealing with subdivision development, we require a 60-foot wide road corridor and that allows additional land for the city, when the roads are deeded to the city, to provide those sidewalks or active transportation trails. The Parks and Rec Committee, if they plan to put an active transportation trail along the water course, they've already, they've been deeded the land, so they have that land to be able to put that corridor in. Once the developer deeds the land, then it's up to the city to put those trails in unless there's something specific that has been negotiated through other things in the subdivision process where if there wasn't adequate land, then sometimes the city can negotiate additional requirements from a developer to put a trail in or to build specific things if they don't have adequate land. And sometimes what they would do is also allocate cash and lieu. Thank you.
Thank you. Question?
I have a question.
Council Twill has a question. Do you have one, two, Council McKinnon? Go ahead, Council Twill.
Did McClair want to go first?
No, no, he's letting you go. He's deferring to you.
Along the lines of the Malpeck Road, that is owned by the provincial government. At the public meeting, Alan Aiken, an engineer with the provincial government, attended the meeting and he indicated that they're looking at widening the road for lanes. I believe that was what he stated. So in terms of widening the road and the active transportation pathway, that would be the responsibility of the provincial government. If you want to look at an example of that is you have to look at St. Peters Road where when they put in the rotaries, the roundabouts, and they also constructed and installed the active transportation pathways. So I would, I would suggest that's the same format, that the provincial government is responsible for the pedestrian traffic pathways to make it safer for the residents to commute up and down Malpeck Road and, of course, the widening of the road. So I just wanted to follow up with Laurel on that.
Deputy, can we allow the, Laurel, do you answer that? Laurel Palmer Thompson?
Yes, Your Worship, through the chair. Yes, I do remember some discussion on that, Council Twill. The province will own the road corridor and I believe Alan Aiken did say in the meeting that they would be working with the city to determine active transportation trail needs and sidewalks. I would have to clarify that with Alan Aiken as to who the ownership would be on the sidewalks in that location. It is a provincial road, but it is my understanding that the city will maintain the sidewalks. Possibly they would cost share development of it in that location, but I would have to confirm that.
Follow up.
Council Twill, second time, go ahead.
Yeah, well, Laurel, again, I point to St. Peters Road. When they constructed the roundabouts and did the work on St. Peters Road, they also installed the active transportation pathway and that was not a cost to the city. That's the provincial government made the commitment and followed through with their commitment to install those pedestrian safety walkways. So I don't know why the formula would change on Malpeck Road. I mean, they know that developments are coming on Malpeck Road and there's a lot of concern about pedestrian safety and they have to fill that responsibility and that obligation. So, you know, I'd even be willing to make an amendment to the resolution to make sure that, you know, that they begin the process of widening the road and adding the transportation pathway so the development can proceed. So I'll make that amendment.
Yeah, friendly amendment. The deputy's going to address that.
Okay, can I get, I took, put an amendment on the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Just, the friendly amendment, she's going to address it first. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council Twill. The resolution that's upon us this evening is a resolution for rezoning for development. Any negotiations that we want to work with the province on active transportation and sidewalks is between the city and the province, not for the developer and so it should really have, it should not align with this resolution this evening. So for that reason, I mean, he's put the friendly amendment there. I'm recommending that it doesn't make sense to go in this resolution, however.
No, it's beside the office. The amendment, the friendly amendment is out of order. We're dealing with a rezoning. Council Bernard.
Just to bring clarity, Your Worship, on the St. Peters Road, we had met with the government, going back quite a few years now. Governments, they generally say they don't do sidewalks. So we had gone to the government of the day and asked for permission to put sidewalks in. They coshed it with us 50%, 50%. It was our responsibility to maintain and clear them. The projects on St. Peters Road in the last few years where the roundabouts were added, they took out the sidewalk that we had already put in, so they replaced it with the active transportation. So that's how that went down. So usually it's a conversation between the province and the city and we usually work out a 50-50 deal to put in the active transportation of the sidewalks.
Council McClair.
Yeah, just back, I asked about the Housing Accelerator Fund as it related to, you know, directly or indirectly to this kind of project. Is, you know, in relation to funding, is it possible for it to play a role in any way? Thank you.
Madam Chair, do you want to repeat that? Yeah, can you just, yeah, go ahead.
So the short answer is no. I'm sure that there's ways for the Housing Accelerator Fund to benefit all future development in Charlottetown, whether it's because we are reopening the official plan, we're redoing the zoning and development bylaw. It's going to cover some staffing concerns we're going to need to administer the Housing Accelerator, but specifically the Housing Accelerator Fund does not pay for sidewalks and active transportation trails.
Okay. Council McClair, Donna Miller Ayton, could we ask that, because Donna, along with Janice Harper and Sue Fraser and Eleanor Muhammad worked on the HAF, the Housing Accelerator Fund. Could you just give us some big parameters on what it is and what we can do with it?
Thank you, Your Worship. So the Housing Accelerator Fund, through that agreement, the city has agreed to implement eight initiatives. So as the chair said, one of those initiatives is the updating of the zoning and development bylaw. And through that update, we can implement measures or regulations that will determine like how housing takes place in terms of densification and so forth. However, the specifics around how we will use the fund outside of the eight initiatives, it's still being developed. So that we will come to the committee first with and then council as that is finalized.
I'm just sending that eight initiatives email to you right now. That's the beauty of having your surface right here. We can communicate via email instantly. I just sent it to you, the eight initiatives. Okay, question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Council Twill?
In favor.
All those against? Okay, just for the record, Council McKinnon is contrary and Council Duran is in conflict, so it's a vote of eight-one. Okay, do you want to read the next one? Oh, can we call in Council Duran?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Four, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Councilor McCabe. Be resolved that council approved the request to amend Appendix A, the official plan future land use map of the city of Charlottetown from medium-density residential to high-density residential. And that council approved the request to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, from the medium-density mixed-use residential zone, MUR, to apartment residential zone, R4B, for the subject property located at Lot 160, Fairdale Drive, PID 192153.
Council Bernard and Council McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. Your Worship, I was part of council whenever this subdivision was being, going through the planning stages. It was a lot of work to, I think it took two years finally get the proper balance, what the city and the developer felt was a good balance. So we have a number of approved large apartment buildings, townhouses, duplexes, residential homes. It was all done nicely. And then there was, of course, the senior complexes. Understand that gentlemen that come in and wants to rezone that senior complex out to more apartment buildings and for me, it's a little premature. The subdivision itself is not 50% completed. And, you know, this is what the public agreed with, this is what council agreed with, and I'm a little hesitant to go in and start changing things, especially this drastic, when it's not 50% completed. So, Your Worship, for me, I'm just going to, I'm going to say no because I don't, I think it's too early. I think it's still, there's still opportunity there for senior complexes to go up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bernard. Council McCabe.
Thank you. Council Bernard was definitely around when the original East Royalty Master Plan did take place. I think that was in 2015, maybe if I'm correct, where this subdivision was approved. So we're nine years later and I don't know how it's only 50% complete because it seems like the whole community's imploded up there with lots of vast housing. We have apartments, we have condos, we have townhouses, we have our twos and we have our one houses. What we don't have is we don't have upgraded infrastructure and we're hearing that all the time. We haven't caught up. We don't have streetlights. We have heard from Public Works that McWilliams Road is definitely a road that needs to be upgraded. It's not, it wasn't built to maintain the development that's there. We've had issues with sediment running into our stormwater management in the last little while that they're trying to work on now, which tells us that we're being a little bit overloaded with the systems that we have out there. You know, there was many positives highlighted in the report. The proposal will increase property tax base, which will allow more municipal services to be funded. And with the amount of, I think residents are wanting to see some action now. So it's been a lot happening and they're wanting to see some more, some more promises come to fruition. They talked about convenience services in the area. That's one thing that I think we're certainly lacking in East Royalty. I know it will come, but it's certainly not a highlight. The housing demand, there's a, there are a variety of houses here and still stuff to be developed. Because of the shortcomings, I won't be supporting this application at this time either. You know, I think the housing piece for seniors was something that people did like and I also just heard that we're going to be redoing our official plan. And in that, I think that's a time that they can relook and see what needs to happen to accommodate our housing issues. Interesting, there's already advertising for condos for this, for this property that we haven't even approved yet. So everybody's moving really fast. That wasn't a real vote of confidence with the residents, let me tell you, when they saw that the condos are already being advertised and we haven't even rezoned the land use yet. So that might be putting the cart before the horse. I too am going to ask council, maybe if we could put the brakes on for any more land use change in East Royalty, Montgomery Heights, until such time that the new official plan is done, which we hear is happening soon through the Accelerator Fund, and maybe have more opportunity to look at what's already happened to provide opportunity for things to get caught up, as mentioned above. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Bernard, did you have your light on?
Thank you, Your Worship. No, I think Council McCabe addressed it. I was just more concerned about, it was obviously before my time, but just in what was proposed a number of years ago about seniors involving more seniors home or housing within that area and the density that is, you know, going there rapidly. So, you know, I feel like rezoning that against, that is kind of going against the wishes of the people at the time, but then also now, as Council McCabe, the kid has already looking to parcel out some of this as condos. So I think you're right in the sense of kind of getting ahead of themselves a little bit and maybe it's an opportunity to slow down and figure out what is really going on in that general area because it is, it is quite dense there now and getting worse. Thank you.
Question?
This is, this is the development off McWilliams Road, correct?
It is. Yes, it is. It's Lot 160, Fairdale Drive, PID number 192153.
Just the one with the six big apartment buildings?
Yeah, it's number four, Resolution Number Four. It's in your package.
Okay.
Okay. Council Beck, can you speak first? Is it up to you to get your green light on for? Go ahead.
Yeah, so the motion is to...
Stand, please.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
So the motion is to approve the development. Councilor McCabe has requested it, she's requested a deferral to...
No, no. It's a yes-no, it's up and down vote. Yes or no?
I think, I understood that she was asking us to not go ahead with this, to defer this motion.
Okay.
So can we clarify that?
Yep, sure. Council McCabe.
So the nice thing about this is just even if this does not get approved tonight, developers can come back after a year's time and revisit a new application for redevelopment. And I'm not asking for a deferral on this particular for a short term. I'm thinking that would give us time to do our official plan and be a little bit further ahead of that. So I'm not looking for a deferral right now in this particular application. I'm looking for council support and not approving the application.
Council Beck, clarified? Good. Council Twill, do a wave there?
Yeah, just a question on the official plan and zoning and development bylaw. So waiting for the zoning and development bylaw and anticipated changes, what will that do? Will that prohibit this development from proceeding at a future date? Does that, you know, throw up the roadblocks to the development that was presented to city council?
Deputy Mayor Yankoff and Donna's waving her head there too, so she could jump in if she wants to, but you can address it. I know you can because you're going to be part of the road show.
Thank you, Council Twill, for your question. In terms of what would be anticipated, that would be our new official plan and prompting the changes to the zoning and development bylaw are yet to be, you know, to be confirmed because we haven't finished the process yet. It still has public consultation again, staff's review, the consultants are through Upland in O2 still have their work to do. So it's really hard to say what that's going to look like. We do know that through some discussions that we've had through the Housing Accelerator Fund and through the initiatives of the federal government and what they're encouraging municipalities to do, we know what that is, but council has not yet made any of those decisions. So whether or not it's going to change the landscape and the decisions to which will happen out in this, in this Fairdale, out in this area, remain to be seen. So we could be here this time next year discussing the same question on whether or not to rezone from the seniors to apartments. So we don't know. We don't have that answer yet. So I hope that's as clear as I can make it right now. And if there's anyone else that wants to add to it, but I think that's, that's the best we can do.
Yeah, there's a process to go through.
Yep.
Council Bernard.
Okay, just a follow-up.
We'll come right back to you, Council Bernard, and then for your second question.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Your Worship, that when we started the official plan, East Royalty was done not that long ago. So the official plan, I can't see, and we're going to go through it again, a review, but East Royalty one's been done. I can't see changes coming to it. I mean, we've already dragged people out for three or four meetings. So this is what was set up and this subdivision was based on that and based on the feedback. And I guess for me, all I'm saying... And I guess for me, all I'm saying is that that section that they want to rezone, that, that block of land was for seniors housing. And for me, it's just too quick to change the zoning yet. What we have there now is you have your single-family homes, and you want to move into a duplex or a townhouse, and you can move up into senior care. That, that was the whole idea of, of this stepping up. So to me, when I say it's a little premature, it's because the area is not fully developed yet. And how do we know that that's community, this community housing is not still going to come to fruition? So to me, I think for residents' expectations and being the subdivision is, is, like I said, it runs from St. Peters Road right up to East Royalty Road. So it's, it's a lot of land. I believe it was 100 acres. So to me, it's a little premature. They got a lot of work left to do yet, and I think it's community care for seniors could still come. Thank you.
Counsel Twill, your second time.
Yeah, so, so again, was the request to change the zoning from community care to an apartment complex, say a seniors complex? I think that's what the president, one of the, one of the issues that the presenter made that, that particular evening in behalf of the developer. He wanted to, wanted to present the fact that they wanted to move away from community care to an apartment complex, which, which would accommodate seniors. Was that, was that what the presentation consisted of?
Deputy, do you want to defer that to David Laurel Lee, Laurel Palmer? Not Laurel Lee, Laurel Lee's with tourism. What do you wish to?
So it's, it's, it's clearly outlined in the report that the request-
Yeah.
-was before the planning board on July 4th of 2023. We proceeded to a public consultation. The request was to, to Fairdale Drive in the Montgomery House subdivision from medium-density mixed-use residential zone to the apartment residential zone and to amend Appendix A of the official plan map from medium-density residential to high-density residential. That's, 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 that's what we're deciding tonight.
Yeah, going from MUR to R4, higher density.
So, so-
No, 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 Counsel Twill. Yeah, Counsel Twill, we're, second time, we're moving on.
But I mean, he talked about community care.
Yep.
Right? I recall the presentation. He talked about community care, so, I mean, that's what he, he referenced a lot, a lot about the challenges for community care. So did he not state that in his presentation? He wanted, they wanted, the developer wanted to move away from community care to a senior citizens complex?
Yeah. No, we're just sticking to the resolution, medium-density residential to high-density.
Okay, so you don't want to answer the question?
Well, no, it's right there in the resolution.
No, I mean, he talked about community care, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, which is part of MUR. Question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Counselors, I just want to get this down. Counselor Beck. McKinnon. I have Counselor, Deputy Mayor Yankoff. Counselor Twill, yea or nay? Counselor Twill?
I'm, I'm going to say no because of the confusion. I never got my question answered. I'm saying no.
Those against, please raise your hand. Okay, McCabe, Duran, Patard, Counsel Ramsey, Counsel Bernard, and Counselor McAlaire. Seven, two, three. Good. We have, I know. So because this resolution was defeated, now we have to go with a resolution to reject or deny it. Do you want to just clarify that, CAO? Is it to deny or reject it?
Thank you, Your Worship. It's to deny it. I can, I can read this out for you, but we'll need a mover and a seconder.
See, and a mover and a seconder. Okay, moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counsel Bernard. Can you get it signed there, please? Do you want to get them to sign it, or? Okay, yes. Do you want to read, please?
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Bernard. Be it resolved, that council deny the request to amend Appendix A, the official planned future land use map of the city of Charlottetown from medium-density residential to high-density residential. And that council deny the request to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw from the medium-density mixed-use residential zone, MUR, to the apartment residential zone, R4B, for the subject property located at Lot 160, Fairdale Drive, PID 192153.
Question?
Question's called.
Question's called. All those in favor to reject the resolution? Counselors McCabe, Duran, Patard, Ramsey, McAlaire, and Counsel Bernard. All those in favor? In favor of, opposing the record, I should say, against the rejection. So we have Beck- Yeah, opposed, opposing the resolution. Beck, McKinnon, and the deputy. Okay, seven, three. Okay. So do you have another resolution? Number five.
Many resolutions tonight.
I know.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved, that council deny the reconsideration request concerning the January 22nd, 2024 approval of the major variance for 15 Park Street, PID 365593, as it has not been found that the request meets the related threshold test as prescribed by Section 3.15.3 of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw for a reconsideration request that concerns a decision of council.
Counselor Patard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess, you know, clearly it's an area of concern for me with Park Street. So just a little context, we do have a resident who has provided the following rationale to question the correctnesses, correctitudes of the decision in the first instance, which would be not enough consideration given to the objection raised by area residents, negative impact on property values already occurring, lack of notification due to the way the bylaw is written, and failure of police and the city to protect citizens and property at previous location. The new location will be no different. In looking at that, anytime a resident or a group of residents submit a request for reconsideration for a resolution passed by council that I didn't support, especially regarding such a contentious issue of public safety and community impact, I do support the claims made by the resident, as I do believe the use of the land for this service does impact surrounding property values and will have a negative impact on the community. Roughly nine residents were notified by the planning department, which prevented most affected residents from providing written feedback. So unfortunately, the planning board does not feel the claim meets the threshold for reconsideration. Therefore, I will not be able to support the resolution this evening, and I hope that others can find a way to see that there might be some merit in reconsidering the application for Park Street. Thank you.
Any other questions called?
Right here.
You got a question?
Yeah, I want to speak to the resolution.
Okay, first time, go ahead.
I think when you have a resident, longtime resident, that, that files for a reconsideration, it tells me that the discussion and the resolution that was passed in the first instance has many flaws and many, many discrepancies. For example, if you look at the letters that come in to the planning department, all of the, all of those letters clearly illustrated they were not in favor of moving the outreach center from Hughes Street to Park Street for obvious reasons. What the residents have gone through, surrounded by the, surrounded by the outreach center on Hughes Street, has been nothing but an unmitigated disaster. I really don't believe, after three years, three and a half years of the outreach center on Hughes Street, the nightmare on Hughes Street, that city council should be supporting this facility in any neighborhood or any community throughout this city. I believe that we, as a council, should be sending an unequivocal, clear message to the premier's office. This community is not interested in what you're proposing, how, how it functions, how it operates. It hasn't earned any credibility, any right whatsoever to continue in any neighborhood or any community in this province. It should be shut down and shut down immediately. All you have to do is drive up and down in Hughes Street and watch the goings-on. It's horrendous, it's shameful, it's irresponsible. It's, it's, it's all of those things above. And really and truly, why, why are we not listening to the residents? I mean, just look what, what has happened on Hughes Street and all the residents in, in that community. The schools, the seniors' homes. Residents have lived, lived in that community for 60, 70 years. And now we want to just move it down the street. And what happens when it doesn't work there? Who's, who's accountable and who's responsible? You know, to suggest that we're going to have a task force, a task force to do what? Same old thing, same old story, and the same old rationale. And, and the rest, who suffers? And Counsel Patard's right. As Boyd Perton said, you know, lots of property value, properties are already going up for sale. There's, there's private sales about to take place. And, and people are living in fear, and, and they're terrified. And council is supposed to protect the residents. That is our job. Not fulfill, so, so, not to fulfill a strategy, a plan of action that's been implemented by this government that has failed and failed miserably. I will be supporting the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, supporting the resolution means that, it says council deny, so you're going to support the denial? Of the reconsideration?
I'm supporting the, well, I'm, I'm supporting the reconsideration.
Okay. Counsel McCabe. Yeah, no, we got it.
Took a minute now.
We got it.
So, so what's the vote? How does the vote go?
No, no, no. Counsel McCabe is just getting up to speak. Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. And, and although I didn't vote in favor to move Park Street, the outreach center from the current location to Park Street, to reconsider a previous decision by council, we have to remember it has to meet one of those three thresholds points. And this file, of any file that's been done in the past year, I believe staff and planning probably looked at it, re-looked at it, and re-looked at it because of the hot commodity that we knew was going to come with this application. So for me, unfortunately, I don't see how it meets any of our three criteria, and I won't be able to support the reconsideration because of that.
Okay. Question called?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, your second time. Second time.
No, no, just a clarification before I speak to it. So if you vote in favor, I'm just trying to understand the process. So if you, if you vote in favor of the resolution-
Yeah.
That means?
We deny it. We deny the request. CAO, can you explain it to them? Just reading from the resolution?
Yeah, explain that to me, please.
Yeah.
Thank you, Your Worship. If you vote in favor, you're voting to deny the request. If you oppose, they're saying to consider the request.
Oh, okay, well, thank you. Thanks, so, okay, so I'll be voting, I'm voting against. I, I wasn't quite sure what Counsel McCabe was talking about.
No, just, we're not having the debate with, what's, what's your issue? What's, you get the second, three minutes to speak in this, your second time. Did you want to add or delete any comments?
Yeah, I have a question. Maybe, maybe someone in the city's corporation. Please explain to me what has changed on Hughes Street that hasn't taken place for the last three and a half years? What were the improvements? What were the enhancements besides, besides some of, some of the drugs that are, that are being utilized on Hughes Street? What has improved?
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to get the deputy mayor to speak to it, and then we're going to the vote. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you. And Counsel Twill, thank you for your concerns and questions. And I realize you've been very passionate on this file. And although I respect your thoughts and your concerns on the file, unfortunately, this evening, we're not, we're not looking at the application as, as the variance. Tonight, we are voting on a reconsideration and whether or not the reconsideration has met the threshold. So staff's recommendation and the planning board's recommendation is that it, and, and the legal opinion has been that it has not met the threshold for a reconsideration. So that's what we're voting on tonight. And, you know, we can be frustrated, and we can be, continue to be mindful of this file and this move and relocation. But tonight, folks, we are voting on a reconsideration, and did it meet the threshold, yes or no? So that's tonight's question.
Question's been called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselors McCabe, Beck, McKinnon, Counselor Ramsey, McAlaire, Bernard, Counselor Bernard, and the deputy mayor, Yankoff. All those against the denial of the reconsideration? And that's Counsel Duran, Counsel Patard, and Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
That is correct. I vote with Counsel Patard and Counselor Duran. And I vote, Mr. Mayor, to support the residents.
Thank you, so that's opposed. Thank you. Next resolution.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved, that council approved the request for a temporary structure variance for an outdoor patio to occupy one required parking space and one required loading space at 101 Longworth Avenue, PID 363671, until the end of October 2024, subject to the applicant receiving an associated development permit from the City of Charlottetown Planning and Heritage Department.
Okay, this is back again, is it? Okay. This is the last, question's called? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, ten, zero. That should move it on. Yes, okay.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved, that council approved the request to allow for a site-specific exemption in the low-density residential zone, R2, as it pertains to property located at 421 St. Peters Road, PID 464586, to permit a double-lane drive-through to be built with respect to an established coffee shop located on an abutting parcel in the highway commercial zone, C2, PID 192187.
Question's called?
Yeah.
All those, all those in favor?
No, 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 I got a question, Mr. Mayor.
You got a question? Okay, first question?
Well, 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 the first, the, the first issue is, as, as I had asked the applicant and the presenter at the public meeting, I asked, by approving this, would it increase more traffic on, 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 on the neighborhood street, Angus Drive? And, and he said, yes. The residents were not against the increase in business as long as you're able to exit and access it on St. Peters Road. So what's happened here is, we're going to experience more traffic on Angus Drive, a neighborhood street. Having highway commercial spill out onto a neighborhood street is wrong from, from, from a number of different perspectives. What urban planner in North America would recommend highway traffic on a neighborhood street? I, I think, I think this whole thing is all wrong. Um, I don't believe we protected the residents on, on Angus Drive, and, and, and I, and I think it's, I think it's just terrible. So, uh, I won't be supporting this, and I know residents on Angus Drive are very, very upset with the increase of traffic, highway commercial traffic on a neighborhood street.
Thank you, Councilor. So, Counselor Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, so, Your Worship, this has always been keep traffic off St. Peters Road, a busy highway, four-lane highway now. So, when people are going into, to Mel's or, or the, uh, coffee shop, pick up their coffees, coffee, donuts, whatever, it's to keep the stacking from coming out on St. Peters Road. So, they'll go in, pick up their goods, they go out where they always have. They come out right front of the roundabout before they continue on in town. So, they come out, yes, on Angus Drive, which is probably fifty feet before the roundabout. It doesn't, to me, I don't see how these arguments of more traffic on Angus Drive comes from that. This is to keep stacking off a busy bypass highway. Come in, pick up their goods, go out, win the roundabout, continue on. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, second time, go ahead. Yeah, second.
Yeah, no, with all due respect, Counselor Bernard, I, I disagree. I've talked to residents on Angus Drive, um, you know, the province has tried to make amends and providing, you know, uh, putting up amenities, whether it be trees and whatnot, but they're averaging a thousand cars a day on, on, on Angus Drive, and it's affect the quality of life for the residents on Angus Drive. I've talked to these people, and they have made it crystal clear to me that they were not in favor of this, of, of, of this, of this traffic onto, onto Angus Drive. I don't think it's fair, I don't think anyone that's living in a residential neighborhood, uh, regardless of where you live in the City of Charlottetown, would want highway commercial onto your residential street. And there were other, Stephen Yo said at the time, at the meeting at the Charlottetown Hotel, when I asked, did you explore or examine any other options? And he said, no, we're only looking at the one option, and I think that's wrong.
Thank you. I do want to say that David Gundrum and Donna Miller Ayton are professional planners, and if they give an opinion, I, I respect it, may not always agree with us, but I do respect the work you're doing, and I know, I know that Michael, Michael Russ is also of a planning background, and along with our CAO, so I think I heard someone say the question. Question's called? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. All those against? Counselor Duran, Counselor Twill, yea or nay?
No.
Okay. Next resolution, please.
Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the following proposed housekeeping amendments for the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw be approved to proceed to public consultation. Section 5.9 Home Occupations, Section 5.11 Tourist Accommodations on Residential Properties, Section 5.11.2 Maximum Gross Floor Area for a Home Occupation, Section 5.11.3 Regulations for a Tourist Accommodation, Section 8.1 Zones, Section 19.1 Permitted Uses Apartment Residential Zone R4A, Section 20.1 Permitted Uses Apartment Residential Zone R4B, Section 37.1 Permitted Uses Port Zone PZ, Section 46 General Provisions for Parking, Section 47.3 Prohibited Signs, Section 47.12.4 FASHA Signs Table, Section 47.14.3 Electronic Signs Table, Appendix A Definition.
Deputy, could I just, under definitions, page 232 on our, so, short-term rental, you're eliminated means the rental of a dwelling unit or a por- portion of a dwelling unit, including a secondary suite with a dwelling for a period less than thirty consecutive days? That's been eliminated?
Um.
So, if I was, do you see it there, short-term rental ba-
But you see what is being replaced with, with the red. So, it's being replaced with, um, uh, means that the rent, the rental of an entire dwelling unit or a portion of a dwelling unit, um, that serves, um, as the operator hosts principal residence for a continuous period of less than one month and defined as a per- permitted use by way of a tourist home. So, that's, the, the black is being taken out and the red is going in.
Yeah. So, serves as an operator host principal residence for a continuous period of less, is that what I'm reading too?
Hmm.
I'm, I'm just looking here where it says after, the, in the black, in the, in the dark color, it means in rental of an entire dwelling unit or portion of dwelling unit, and then a blank cuts out the secondary suite, but then it adds that serves as an operator host principal residence? Is that correct? So, is that eliminating secondary dwellings or secondary, uh, suites?
No, I believe that the secondary suites would be, um, referred to in a different area of the zoning and development bylaw.
Okay.
But I can have-
No, 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 that's, that's good. That's, I just wanted to clear, as soon as I saw it.
Yes.
Just wanted to get it clarified. Thank you. Question's called?
Question called.
Okay. All those in favor? Yeah, Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Yeah, ten, zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah. What was the vote on Angus Drive?
Vote on Angus Drive was eight to two, Councillors Duran and Twill opposed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Is that it for your report?
No, it's Eddie.
Oh, 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 oh. Don't want to rush that. Okay. Thank you. Did you want to? Yep. It's your show. Your circus.
City of Charlottetown Amendment to adopt bylaw PH dash ZD point two dash zero seven six, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to permit a site-specific exemption to the existing zoning that applies to the subject property located at 421, uh, St. Peters Road, PID 464586, to permit a double-lane drive-through as permitted, as a permitted land use within the low-density residential zone R2 on the subject property with respect to an established coffee shop use located on an abutting parcel, PID 192187. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH dash ZD point two dash zero seven six, as it pertains to 421 St. Peters Road, PID 464586, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff.
No debate? Okay. Shall I carry?
Uh, no.
Did you want to say something, Counselor Twill?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, just, just so I understand, that this is to approve the development at 421 St. Peters Road, correct?
Yea. Yes.
Pardon?
Yes, it is. To permit a site-specific exemption to the existing zoning that applies to the subject property located at 421 St. Peters Road. Do you want the PID number?
Who moved, who moved the resolution? Who seconded?
No, 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 this, this was moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff. First reading. You ready?
Ready.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. All those against? Counselor Duran, and, no, Counselor Twill, yea or nay?
No.
Okay. Eight, two. Okay, another one?
City of Charlottetown Amendment to adopt the official plan amendment, PH dash OPA dash one point zero four zero, that the land use for the property at Malpec Road, PID 104 seven five six two, as shown on Appendix A Future Land Use Map of the City of Charlottetown Official Plan, is designated as high-density residential, hereby excluding it from its formal designation of low-density residential. Be it resolved that the official plan amendment, PH dash OPA point one dash zero three nine, as it pertains to Malpec Road, PID 1047562, as attached, be adopted. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff.
So, Counselor Duran, this is the PID number regarding hid, Hidden Valley? CAO, Eleanor? It is. It's PID number one four, one zero four.
Malpec Road?
Just don't vote.
Just don't vote.
What's that? Repeat that loud and clear. Go ahead. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Counselor Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. Albows against? Okay, nine, one with, no, eight, one with Counselor Duran a po- uh, in conflict. Okay. Go ahead.
And now for the zoning and development bylaw to adopt bylaw PH dash ZD point two dash zero seven seven, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to rezone the subject property located at Malpec Road, PID 1047562, from low-density residential single zone R2S to apartment residential zone R4. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH dash ZD, uh, point two dash zero seven seven, as it pertains to Malpec Road, PID 1047562, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff.
Okay. Shall it carry? Opposed. Counselor McKinnon. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Is that it?
No.
Okay. Deputy, thank you very much. Eleanor, thank you. Next report is Environment and Sustainability, Counselor Terry Bernard. Is Jessica here? No, she probably left.
No, but that's okay, Your Worship. We didn't meet, we didn't meet, uh, we didn't meet last month, anyway. Okay?
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So, just some, just some comments. Interesting enough, the February transit ridership, Your Worship, is up twenty-six percent with over a hundred, six riders, uh, year over year. So, February last year to this year, it was up twenty-six percent. So, I'm assuming that's some of the new routes that we put in is, is impacting that too. Uh, and again, that just goes to show that the conversation we've had in the past about the buses and, and needing to get some buses sooner, and so there's a good indication of why. It's a, that's a big increase. Um, the other comment I'd like to make, Your Worship, is, is the city through the switch program has executed over ten million dollars in zero percent loans for energy efficiency to help fight against climate change by switching from fossil fuels to electric heat pumps, solar panels, and other sources, Your Worship, to reduce our carbon footprint. The province has been very aggressive in offering incentives to, uh, move people off fossil fuels also. By offering incentives, I believe right now they're at a hundred thousand or less, they get their heat pumps for free and insulation and so on, so, um, now we see, Your Worship, that the electricity rates have taken jump, and I think as of now, from May last year to now, it's up nine percent with, uh, I think there's a couple more, um, decisions that Iraq has to make, so it could go up as high as twelve percent in, in, within the year. So, um, I agree with Minister Myers, Your Worship, that the province needs to review what would look, what it would look like for Ireland to own the electricity production and development here for Charlottetown and for Prince Edward Island, um, to try and see if we can't keep electricity rates under control. I mean, we, we, the city, the province is doing everything we can to get everybody off fossil fuels, um, only to be hit by higher costs. So, I, I, I refer to the switch program because we've, we've put out, like I say, the ten million for zero percent financing, so people are, are paying for those upgrades. Uh, the province is putting out a lot of money for the, the, uh, free heat pumps and free, uh, energy efficiency updates to people's homes. So, uh, I'll, I'll take this to our next Environment Sustainability Committee. I just wanted to give it, counsel, I had up, that we're going to be talking about this and see if we can't bring a resolution next month, Your Worship, to, uh, to support the province in that endeavor to see if they can move towards, uh, their own energy supply and delivery. So, thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Counselor Twill?
Uh, thank you for your report, Counselor Bernard. Just wondering where we're at in the process in terms of, uh, public engagement with the, uh, with the consultants regarding the transit, um, where we're at in terms of timelines and timeframes. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor Twill, I'll take that under advisement, and I'll get Jessica to get back to you on that. Okay?
Okay. Counselor Bernard, thank you very much. Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration, Counselor John McElair. Counselor McElair?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Finance Audit, Tendering and Administration Committee have met on two dates, February 28th, 2024, and March 6th, 24. Uh, the minutes of both those meetings are included in your package. There's also, uh, one, uh, one resolution that's included in, uh, your package for your consideration. And, uh, just by, uh, just by way of comment, um, obvious to everyone around the table that, uh, we're, uh, uh, council and, uh, the finance committee is going through a very public process here with our budgeting process to, to get finalized on our capital and operating budgets. It's, um, it's been kind of a year of transition with, uh, Dan Jenkins, our new CFO, and, uh, and our finance manager, Betty, Betty French. However, we are, uh, we are, uh, working towards closure, and tomorrow night, um, we have to, uh, we have to come back again and meet and finish off deliberations on our capital budget, and then, uh, if, uh, if time permits, uh, further discussion on the, uh, capital and operating budget. So, that's just, um, that's just, uh, an update to where we are on this, uh, budgeting process for '24, '25. Um, if there's any questions with the information that's circulated in the, uh, in your package, I'll do my best to answer the questions, and if I can't answer them, Dan Jenkins, the CFO, is, uh, is here to, uh, to answer what I can. Thank you.
Oh. Question called.
I have a question.
Oh, oh, okay, go ahead, Counselor Twill.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Counselor McElair, for your, uh, report and, uh, the endeavor that you embarked upon as Chair of the Finance Committee. No easy task. Um, I just want to remain, uh, consistent and persistent on my aim and objective for a, a bylaw for procurement. Um, I know staff are, are looking at, you know, going inside.
Counselor Twill, Counselor Twill?
Yes, yes.
Um, that, that was not in, uh, was that in your minutes? Was there anything on your?
There, there is, uh, there is reference to the minutes to, uh, to that.
Okay, so, I, I, so go ahead, then. My apologies, Counselor, do you go ahead and ask your, ask your question to Counselor McElair?
No, I accept your apology. Thank you. Uh, so, Counselor McElair, again, I'll reiterate, I'm, I'm going to remain consistent and persistent. Uh, I don't believe, uh, that we need to, uh, retain an outside consultant. I believe that's a job of our senior staff. Uh, staff have indicated they've, uh, have already done some work on the procurement bylaw. I'd like the, the work that's been, uh, that's been committed so far, like that tabled, and, um, I'm, I'm wondering, you as Chair, uh, can take this back to your committee? I'd like to set up a time, excuse me, a timeline and timeframe for city staff to, uh, do a jurisdictional scan and, 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 uh, bring some, uh, work in progress to city council for city council entertain. I think this has gone on long enough. Uh, it's nothing to do with you, you're not, you're not in, involved with the, uh, with the actual work that's being completed, but, uh, I, I think we got to get moving on the, get moving on the procurement bylaw. We, we need it now more than ever. Thank you.
Did you want to answer that, Counselor McElair? Okay.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Twill, for your comments, and, uh, I know there's been nobody leading the charge bigger than you on this procurement, uh, procurement bylaw. And just by way, uh, of, uh, information that you shared, I mean, at our last finance committee, uh, there's two things that I shared, uh, again, wanted to see where we were with this, uh, uh, in, you know, in the process, and, um, the, uh, not only the procurement bylaw, but the funding formula. I shared at the committee level that those two items will remain on, on, on the Finance Committee agenda until their, until their debt willth. But the procurement bylaw, I'll, I'll, um, I'll, I'll speak to a little bit, and then I think I'll have Danny, uh, if he will, to, uh, to, um, I guess, give a little more, uh, perhaps depth as to, um, where he feels we need to be with the process and why there's the request that's in the budget for, uh, operating budget for, uh, to go up for an RFP for this. It's, uh, it's not a little, it, there's, I think there's, there's a lot more to this procurement bylaw and, than perhaps I perhaps recognized. It's not perhaps as simple as, uh, uh, doing a, a cut and paste of, uh, other examples that are- with the process and why there's the request that's in the budget for, operating budget for, to go up for an RFP for this. It's not a little, I think there's a lot more to this procurement bylaw than perhaps recognized. It's not perhaps as simple as doing a cut and paste of other examples that are perhaps available. I know there's, we looked at, there was talk, you know, the apparently University of Prince Edward Island says a good policy, and you say, okay, well, let's get the best of other procurement documents that are in the marketplace. But there's that, but there's also another piece, and I'm going to have Dan speak to it, that internally with staff and what has to happen with our system. So if we do, if there is support to have the funding for the, to go up to an RFP for this, I'll ask Dan if he would give a little more background as to the need for what they're requesting.
Okay, Counsel McLeer, we're just doing a bylaw. We've been talking about this for four years. Four years, this council, not the previous council, you're going to ask Ramsey, McCabe, all of us, four years. Like, I made reference to the province, they have a procurement act there. Like, anyways, the CAO wants to say something.
Thank you, Worship. So this actual topic and more information around it is actually part of another process right now, and that's part of the budget process, where this is a request, this is part of the budget process. So I am going to recommend that this conversation be had as part of the budget process in terms of whether that funding is put forward tonight, rather than exploring it tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Beck.
Thank you, Worship. Just seeking a bit of a clarification on page two ninety-seven with regards to the table that was put in with regards to our long-term debt. So if I'm, and please help me if I'm reading this correctly, and end of March twenty-two was ninety-four, ninety-five thousand. It got reduced to twenty, about down to eighty-seven thousand? Sorry, eighty-seven million, thank you, yes. Yeah, eighty-seven thousand, thank you.
Because that way we'd be spending a lot more money, anyways.
I'm trying to read and think at the same time here, it's a difficult task. So next year, we're projected to go up about thirty-three million dollars in our debt, and then in twenty-twenty-five, go up another twenty-five million in our long-term debt. Am I reading those numbers correctly? Or, and if so, what would be, what would we be attributing to the spike in our debt? I guess I'm just trying to understand that. The numbers look, kind of jumped out at me.
Simmons Aqua Marina Facility would be part of that. Counsel McLeer.
Thank you, Counselor Beck, for the clarification on that. You know, it is a good table and good data. I'll defer that to the CFO, Dan Jenkins, to give you the answer to your question on that.
Thank you, Counsel Duran, through the mayor, to Counselor Beck. Yes, I believe you're reading the table correctly. I'm sorry that Betty's not here to respond to your question directly, it was something that she put together. But essentially, the one hundred and nineteen million that is forecast for the end of this month is Betty and the finance team's calculation of the draws that we have made on our long-term debt borrowing. The projection, the estimated outstanding principal as of March thirty-first next year factors into that long-term debt, the forecast or the capital budget that we were dealing with at the time. And to be fair, I don't know whether that was the fifty-six million dollar capital budget or the seventy-five million dollar capital budget, but I'll get back to you, I'll chat with Betty in the morning and get back to you to let you know for sure.
Want to follow up? Good.
I did, if I may, respond to Counselor Twill's question on the procurement.
Go ahead.
Not to get into specifics, but the intention would be that staff would undertake all of the work initially and do as much as possible with respect to getting the procurement bylaw finalized. The additional work that is required is not just the drafting of the bylaw, but refining or designing and policies and procedures that go along to match that new bylaw and also to train staff. So it's a fairly involved process to undertake a new procurement process, and we may need some assistance with that and understanding the priority that council has. We wanted to have some latitude to engage professional services if required, but we would undertake as much of that in-house as possible.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, Worship. Chair McLeer, I'm just wondering, when I'm looking at those same figures that Counsel Beck brought up, is that including our funding partners? Because we usually put the money into the project first, and then the checks usually come back late in the year. So those spikes, is that us from the project, but then there's still funding partnership money to come back into the city?
Counsel McLeer.
Thank you, Counsel Bernard, and again, I'd defer that to Dan Jenkins, her CFO.
Thank you, Counsel McLeer, through the chair, to Counsel Bernard. I can only assume that that would include all of the partner funding contributions, so it would be net of the partner funding.
So Dan, if I understand that correctly, then so those figures will go down once the partner funding comes in from the province or CCBF? That will go down? They'll go back on that?
Yeah, no, I believe the projection that Finance put together would be net of the contribution, so that would be after reducing the.
That's our debt.
Yep.
Of net contributions.
Yep.
Yep. That's what was in the books. Okay, so, okay, thank you. Got a motion there, Counsel? Is there a motion here, a resolution?
Moved by Counsel McLeer, seconded by Counsel McCabe. Be it resolved that per submission to a publicly advertised tender, a sale agreement for a former alleyway between Dorchester and King Streets, parcel RD dash one on Morris Geomatics and Engineering Limited drawing two 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 zero three dot two zero zero to Waymouth Properties for the amount of thirty thousand dollars plus applicable taxes be approved, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Thank you. Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
That's your report. Thank you, Counselor John McLeer. Next report is Human Resources, Counselor Justin Matard. I think it's you.
Thank you, Worship. The Human Resource Committee met on January eighteenth and February fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four. The minutes of these meetings are included in your package. Our manager, Emily MacLeod, sends her regrets this evening, so if there's any questions, I'll do my best to address them, and we have our CAO who might be able to help as well. And we have no resolutions this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Protective and Emergency Services, Counselor Kevin Ramsey, Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Worship. We met on, I'm just trying to find my date here, February twenty-first. The minutes are in your package. We have one resolution before you, and we're willing to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Worship. To the Chair, for your next committee meeting, can you bring back questions about the bylaws to get them put onto the Summer Proceedings Act? It was sent to legal late last summer, and we haven't heard anything back yet. Can you please inquire into that?
Yes, we will. Thank you for that, Counsel McKinnon.
Any resolutions?
One, sir.
Yep. Do you want to read that?
Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that council accept the sole source purchase through safety source fire, the authorized supplier and approved tender winner for the supply and delivery of twelve sets of turnout gear at a cost of forty-seven thousand three, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents plus applicable taxes, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, ten, zero. Thank you, Counsel Ramsey. Counsel Twill, your next perks, recreation, and leisure activities, Counsel Mitchell Twill.
Thank you. The report is in your package. I believe we have a resolution for council's consideration. I'll do my best to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, do you want to read it? Oh, Counsel Beck.
Does the Youth Engagement Committee file under your purview, Counsel Twill? Sorry?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I'll talk about with you, I'll talk about a matter later on, it doesn't have to be brought up here, but that's good. Thank you.
Okay, resolution.
Moved by Counsel Twill, seconded by Counsel Matard. Be it resolved that as per recently advertised requests for proposals, Simmons Sports Center ice resurfacer replacement, the City of Charlottetown accepts the bid of one hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars plus applicable taxes from Saunders Equipment Limited. The mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
I'm taking that, that's the Zamboni. Yeah. It's a nice name for it. Ice service, ice resurface. Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill.
In favor.
Okay, ten, zero. It is. It's an E Zamboni. It's good. Climate action. Okay, thank you, Counsel Twill. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Water and wastewater utility. Counsel Duran. Click you on there, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee had a regular meeting on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. We do not have any resolutions for your consideration, but I'll gladly answer any questions you have on the package that was given out. Thank you. And we do meet on Thursday as well, so if you have anything that you want me to bring up, feel free to ask. Thank you.
Yeah, I do.
You have a question?
Yeah, I do. Counsel Duran, as you know, I've been asking about the contract regarding the fiber optic, I must have asked at least fifteen times. Can you please give me an update as to where we're at with the contract being signed with the City of Charlottetown and the contractor?
Thank you for that question, Counsel Twill. I do not have the answer, and I'll forward it to our manager, Richard McEwen, to ask, because I don't know where we're at with it.
Mr. McEwen.
The contract rests with the contractor.
Pardon me?
The contract is with the contractor for their review.
So, so once he signs it, agrees to it and signs it, then it comes to council for a vote?
Yes, it would come back to council for their consideration.
Okay. Can I ask just a follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
I think Counsel Duran is ready for your question, he's still standing.
No problem.
Thank you. So here's the question. Were the changes made to the contract from the original contract, like was there amendments made to the contract that are somewhat different than what was originally intended?
Again, I have no idea, so I'll pass it over to Mr. McEwen, but we should get a copy of that for a meeting on Thursday, and we'll probably get an update as well, I believe. That would be a great idea. Thank you. But Mr. McEwen can answer the question.
So I'd remind council that any contract discussions would be taken care of within a closed meeting, because we wouldn't disclose matters in an open forum that presents that information to the contractor or can bias council's decision-making powers. So this contract has been discussed in closed meetings at the utility and with council in the past, and will continue to do so until you're ready to make a decision.
Counsel Twill, does that answer your question? I think you've asked that before, and you did get that answer before, so it is a contract? And I think I wanted to have the manager to state that clearly, that we have done it behind closed doors because of the nature of the contract. Counselor McLeer.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, to the Chair, or just staying with the fiber op theme here. My question's not in relation to the contract, although that's a paramount importance as well, but just wondering where we are physically with the, with what's going in the ground and that connection piece, and I know there's reference in our package, something about a ninety percent completion rate, but I'm just wondering if you can give some clarity as to what's going on in the ground in terms of the connection pieces with this technology. Thank you.
Counsel Duran.
Thank you for that, Counsel McLeer. I don't see the ninety percent piece in the minutes. I know we're far more than that, or I'm led to believe that we are. We're up in the ninety-eight point five percent range, I believe, and else the manager would like to clarify where we're at in the numbers. Thank you.
Mr. McEwen.
Yes, so the final leg is what we're working on now, it's the final connection to the Charlottetown Pollution Control Plant with the conduit.
Okay. No resolutions? Okay. Public Works, thank you, Counsel Robert Duran, thank you, and Counsel McCabe, Public Works.
Worship, our Public Works Committee met on February twenty-second, again on March the seventh. The draft minutes for those meetings are included in your package. The Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities did not meet since our last meeting. There are two resolutions for consideration tonight, and if there's any questions you have, both the manager and I are here and trying to do our best to answer questions. Thank you.
CAO, do you want to read the first resolution?
Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender, West Royalty Community Center washroom upgrades, the submission of WM and M nineteen ninety-three Limited in the amount of eighty-two thousand plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Favorite question there, Counsel Ramsey. Questions called? All those in favor? Okay. Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Second one.
Moved by Counsel McCabe, seconded by Counsel McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public tender for Hillsborough and West Royalty Community Center generators, the submission of Hanson Electric in the amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred dollars plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Ten, zero. Thank you, Chief Engineer Scott. Okay. Okay, thank you. Economic Tourism, Culture, and Cultural Development, and I think we have Laura Lee here for the department. Counsel McKinnon.
Thank you, Worship. The Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee, we did not meet since the last monthly council meeting. The Arts Advisory Board met on February the eighth. Minutes for this meeting are included in your package. There's no resolution for your consideration this evening. There's no resolution for your consideration this evening. I'd like to offer a few departmental highlights recently. Port Charlottetown recently announced what is expected to be a record-breaking cruise season in 2024, with 96 ships carrying over 165,000 passengers, and a dedicated crew of over 74,000 are expected to arrive in Charlottetown between April 8th and October 30th, representing a 36.5 increase over 2023. It was another busy month for events in the city with the Jack Frost Winter Fest, which returned for the first time since 2020, along with the P E I Beer Festival, Ponale Hoggie Tournament, Squash P E I Open, Atlantic Collegiate Athletic Association Men's and Women's Basketball Championship, and Music P E I Week. Up next is the Atlantic Entertainment Expo and the 2024 Eastern Canadian Ringhead Championships. 2024 is shaping up to be a strong sport tourism year for Charlottetown, with two major events recently announced taking place in the capital city this fall. With the Grand Slam of Curling Tour Challenge, we'll showcase the world's top 64 men's and women's curling teams as they compete across six days in early October, while Sport Tourism Industry Event, SPOHO Experience, will see sport event right holders, tourism professionals, event management firms, and suppliers and vendors from the sport hosting industry gather in Charlottetown over two days in late October. Departmental staff have advised that they are not done yet, and they have two more international sport event announcements to come over the next few weeks. You may have noticed some beautiful new artwork hanging from the lampposts in the downtown core. The city's latest outdoor lightbox exhibit, Ensemble: Music and Sounds of the Island, runs through May 6 and features 15 original artworks by 15 island-based artists curated in recognition of two signature musical celebrations being hosted during this timeframe. Music P E I Week, which concluded on Sunday evening, and the 2024 East Coast Music Awards Festival and Conference will be hosted in the city from May 1st to the 5th. More information on artworks can be found at charlottetown.ca-publicart. Thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, and we have Laurel here as well. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead there, Counsel Twill.
Has the structure of the Economic Development Tourism and Events Department, has that been separated?
Is that in the minutes?
No, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, no, if it's not in the minutes, I think that's operational. You can...
It's operational?
Yeah.
Nothing to do with City Council?
Not at this point. Okay. Counsel McKinnon, I do want to say one thing. Jennifer Jones that was here for the Grand Slam opening, what an unbelievable person to have as a representative for that Grand Slam. She added a lot of firepower to the announcement, so I don't know who brought her in. I think it was your group, but well done. And silly Robbie Doherty added every, just was another big add-on to the whole announcement. So, I want to say big thanks from all of us to, yeah, well done. Thank you. Strategic priorities. Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation, Counsel Norman Beck.
Thank you for that, your worship. The strategic priorities, Communication and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on March 7th. Minutes are in your package, and there is one resolution for your consideration here tonight. One thing I do want to talk about in the package is just the discussion that we had around the additional recommendations that came out from the Remuneration and Remuneration's Commission and Allowances Commission. So, thank you for your input. It was great to get the input from everyone, and there was a pretty clear consensus from council that we appreciate the work that was done by Lori Pendleton and Brian Hooley and Ken Durash, and the recognition that the work, the recommendations, the additional recommendations were outside the scope of work. But all that being said, I think it was indicative that they took their job seriously, they listened to what we had to say, they listened to the input that came from council, and it was predominantly council that provided the information for them. So, you know, I do, I think it's good to recognize the work that they did do and thank them for taking the initiative, although it may have been outside the scope of what they were asked to do. So, anyway, if there are some other, any questions about anything, I will do my best to answer them.
So, you do have a resolution, but Counsel Bernard, do you have a question with the report? Counsel Bernard?
Yep. I do, I'm just, it has to do with the remuneration information that's in there, and I just wonder, Counselor Beck, and I know we gave our feedback, but I'm looking at number three and wonder if it wouldn't be useful to do that, to do number three up, where it gives the job profile and description. Pro residents have a good idea of what it is we do. So, I know it was recommended, and I wonder if that's, if that's not worth taking back to your committee and having a look at that number three to see if it's something that we want to look at? I think it'd be, I think it'd be very useful.
Counsel Beck.
I think the message, quite personally speaking, I think there were some things that we should have been considering on a lot of the recommendations. That's just my personal opinion. The request that came from the committee was to try and get a consensus as to what items, I think it was three to 10 in the report, I think it was. And basically, the recommendation that came back, or the feeling was, was that none of these should be addressed, that it was all, they were all outside the scope of the Remuneration Allowances Commission. Personally speaking, again, I would say that there are some things in here that, I mean, I think we should be looking at keeping in mind onboarding, especially for new councillors. I think that's something that we should be cognizant of. Committees, I mean, we talk about committees all the time, you know, is there some other things there? So, I think we all have maybe some, because these recommendations, this information came from them. They didn't pick these recommendations out of the top of their head. They came from what they heard. It's kind of a what-we-heard report that they put back. And so, they took it upon themselves to put that information in there. The consensus that came back from the feedback from council when we shared that was that we really don't address any of them because all of them fall outside the scope. So, that's the message that I don't think there's really anything more to take back to committee, because I don't think any of them, the message that came to us was that we really don't, we don't address any of them.
Counsel Bernard, second time.
Yeah, no, and I understand all that. I know this was outside of their jurisdiction, but what I'm suggesting is that to have the job description, job qualifications would probably be a good thing. I think all 10 councils would like to have some input, plus the mayor would like to have the input on that, so.
Want to answer? Go ahead.
I guess if we're going to open up, I think we open up discussion on them all. I think, I don't think we cherry pick. I think we, like, the message came back, we don't address any of them. So, I'm perfectly open to re, to looking at these things, but that's a personal opinion. I'm not, I'm respecting the decision that came forth of council. We put the question out there, we asked, what do you think? Consensus came back, that's the decision, we go forward, we speak in one voice, we go ahead, and we move forward. So, I think if we're going to go back, if there is a desire, again, that's up to council, but I think the message is pretty clear that we really don't address any of these because they fell out of the scope of the remuneration and allowance, which is what that committee was tasked to deal with. So, again, I think it's an all or nothing.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. And when I look at this, and I just think that, you know, in order to grow and to do better, it's not going to hurt to have an opportunity to sit down and talk about why these came out, because he's right, they came out of a discussion that they took information from our meetings and our ideas, and they formed these suggestions. So, in order for us to maybe go and look at why these came out, and is there something here that we can do better, it's certainly not going to waste time if it could progress us in a healthy and positive way. So, I would like to look at them too.
Counsel Twill, I can't see you. Do you have any?
No, I think Counselor Beck captured it well.
Yep.
I think the message was crystal clear, right? Council said, no, these were not the mandate of the committee, and, you know, where some of these recommendations came from is certainly beyond me, but nonetheless, I think Counsel, the Chair of the Committee is correct. Council come back with a pretty clear message that we're not entertaining these recommendations, and we move on.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so on the remuneration, just one second. On the remuneration and indemnities, I think we will have something in April with a first reading, hopefully, C A O Eleanor? Is that correct? No. Well, we do have a bylaw that's about our schedule of remuneration and indemnities. We've been waiting for it. Councils have been asking about it. So, when does it come up? Can it come up in the special meeting or the next regular monthly meeting? It's just a clarification.
Thank you, your worship. So, that item would be going through the H R, an H R committee meeting, and then it has to come through a regular meeting of council.
Okay, so in April. Okay. Counsel Beck.
Yeah, I guess kind of to put a bow on this, I think maybe we can park these recommendations. I mean, I'm here, we're, now we're kind of hearing a conflicting voice, so maybe there isn't, no, and that's, I know, but again, I go back, we can't cherry pick this. Okay? But I think if there are some things, I think we can leave these, they can stay, and if there's some things that want to get revisited, if there's a collective will, and like I said, I'm open, I'm open to revisiting any or all. I really am. But there has to be a collective will to do that. So, the, what came through was the collective will.
Yeah.
If there, at some point in time, some of these want to get brought up again, that would have to become, I assume, in a notice of motion, whatever it might be. But I think for now, where we are is we are, we are holding status quo, and if we want to keep them in mind, keep them around, and then we may bring them up at some point in time.
That's the teacher in you. You're open and flexible. That's what I like about you.
Thank you, Counselor Beck.
Mr. Mayor?
No, just wait, Counsel Mettart is up.
Just to verify, Counselor Beck, you said the collective will of council, do you mean more of the majority will or the collective? Because I feel there might have been some, you know, we'll park it for a bit and revisit at a later date. That does not take it off the table, as far as I'm concerned. That's just saying we'll revisit it at a later time, which could be months or forever, but, so I just want a clarification when, because I'm sure they were all filtered in differently. So, when you're saying it was the collective will, is that the majority of council or...
Counsel Beck, can we just get Counsel Twill, and then he can answer a couple of them? Counsel Twill?
Yes, Counselor Beck, I'm looking for an update. I filed a couple of notices of motion. One was on the proposed bylaw to deal with needles being distributed throughout the city of Charlottetown, and how they're showing up in our parks and school grounds and playgrounds and sports fields, public spaces, private property. I did suggest, and I think it's a good suggestion to invite the Chief Medical Officer, Heather Morrison, to come in and have a talk with council, you know, as part of that process. And then the second notice of motion was one to have the city of Charlottetown look at an independent investigation as to how drugs were allowed to be, you know, be utilized on the site at the outreach center. A lot of people were upset with that. The government of the day admitted that this was going on after pressure from the community. They said they reversed the policy. I'd like to know, you know, who gave authorization of that policy and what was done about it. So, if you could please take that back to your committee, I'd like to further engage with that as well.
Counsel Beck, do you want to just follow up with Counsel Mettart's issue, and then Counsel Twill, I guess going back to Standing Committee, correct? Yeah.
Sure. I don't think your request was forgotten, Counsel Twill.
No.
I think there were some intermediate steps. I can certainly take it back for further advisement at our next committee meeting. We can explore it a little bit further. Just in regards to Council and Mettarts, I think there was varying degrees of the feeling of this. There were some who expressed strong sentiment that we really do nothing, or to not act upon them. And then there was some who maybe, like Counsel Bernard, who maybe liked certain elements of it and did not maybe agree with all the recommendations. Like I said, I think, I think it might be worthwhile leaving them there if we decide, if there's a collective will to revisit these at a later time. I don't want to ignore the work that these people put into it. Again, I reiterate, it came from us. These recommendations came largely from what they heard during the discussions that they had with us. So, I would suggest that we keep it there, and if at some point in time we decide to choose one, or two, or three, or all, then we can revisit them. They're always there, they're not going anywhere. And so, I think, I think we leave them. And to Counselor McCabe's point, if we feel that it's something that can help improve our processes, that can make us better as a council, why wouldn't we do it? So, let's, we'll keep them there, and if they decide to reopen, they'll reopen again.
Open and flexible. Okay, we got a resolution? Did you want to ask a question with the report there, Counsel Ramsey?
I agree with Counselor Beck too. Like, you can't cherry pick it up, and we're forever talking about educational and onboarding and everything. Like, that's something that could be brought up then, you know, just say, I mean, here's a list, you know, why don't we all review this? Do you like this? You like that? You know, something like that, that's off the record basically, and have everybody's feelings up there, you know, which amount of feeling. So, the door is always open.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Resolution number one? No, we went twice. I want to keep moving. No, no, a lot of people watching. Yeah, just, there's always a target on my back.
Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Yankoff. Be it resolved that council instructs staff to enter into preliminary negotiations with Twill Co. properties regarding the proposed redevelopment of the Queen Street Parkade with the goal of developing the terms of a long-term lease agreement, and that council instructs staff to initiate the sale of the vacant city lot on Kent Street, P I D 679365 adjacent to the Queen Street Parkade. And just as a point of order, so there's no confusion for the public, Counselor Twill is not related to Twill Co. properties. Thank you.
Did you verify that? Did you verify that? Okay.
Pardon me?
It's verified. Counsel Twill?
Yeah, just a question to the C A O, was there confusion there in the community?
Go ahead.
I think, your worship, just so there is no confusion to the community, since you share the same name, in case there's any question of conflict, just to be very clear that there is no conflict here.
That's exactly right.
Yep, just like Richard Brown and Philip Brown. Yes, Counsel Ramsey. Counsel Ramsey?
You guys aren't related.
Counsel Ramsey, go ahead there, Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you, Counselor Beck, for your report. Just on this resolution, are we still going to own the property, or is this going to be sold to the Twill Company? Or are they just doing the work and the whole proposal? Like, is it still going to be owned by the city if this is passed, you know? I'm just, sort of clarification, because I don't know if it's, if he's going to put all his money into it, or are we selling the property to him? Thank you.
Counsel Beck, did you want to defer, or do you want, C A O, you got the chief engineer here, you got a whole, what do you want to do?
I can, I get, I give my answer, but Scott's here.
Do you have an answer? Give it.
No, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, chief engineer.
Go right to the source.
Through your worship to the counselor. So, the property that the parkade is currently situated on, it will not be sold. We will, the city will retain the ownership of that property. We will, the city will retain the ownership of that property. It's a long-term lease of the property. The facility itself, though, would be owned then by Twill Co. So the parking, the parkade structure on top of the ground would be owned by Twill Co., but we would still own the land and it's a long-term lease that we would enter into if that, if we choose to go this way.
Good. CAO, you want to add anything? That's good. Deputy Mayor Yankoff, this is in your ward.
Thank you. Just looking at the resolution, and I know we discussed this in our committee, but at the time, I didn't see the actual resolution. I believe this should be two separate resolutions because the second part of this resolution really has nothing to do with the first part. And if you read it, it looks as if the council is instructing staff to initiate the sale of the vacant city lot on Kent Street to possibly the Twill Co. properties, because it's all within one resolution. So I think it should be two separate resolutions because this piece of property, if we're, if it's going up to initiate a sale, anybody could buy it.
Counselor Beck or CAO or Eleanor, that's a good question. Counselor Beck, do you want to take a jab at it or defer?
I'll take a stab at it. My understanding was, and going back to our discussion at the committee level, was that we approved the project in principle. We're, I think it's a project well worth exploring. So we wanted to get those negotiations going on with, to start those negotiations as soon as we could to, because the other part that's tagged into it is there was some feedback that came through our charlestownhall.ca where there was some input on the proposal. Scott Adams has agreed to take that. He's categorized those, he's grouped them in a thematic way. He's taking the feedback and is willing to sit down with the developer to look at what, some of the feedback that we did receive, which was valuable input. Coinciding with that, I think there's a little parcel of land that is required to make this development happen. So that is a piece of land that the developer requires and that's why it would be something similar to what we just, a deal we consummated down there on Lower Queen Street, where we took that back alley and that sale was completed in order to allow the development to move ahead. So I see this as kind of similar in the sense that we're looking to allow for that or initiate the sale to kind of allow that development to potentially move ahead. It's kind of, that's kind of what I understand. So Scott, if I have something around there, feel free to...
CAO or Scott, who wants to take a jab and then we'll come back.
Thank you, Your Worship. So you could split it into two, but we can't negotiate the lease agreement with this developer without putting the land up for sale as part of the process. It is a public process. However, there will be conditions in there for the development of the piece of the land. And right now that land is surrounded by the property, like one developer who owns the land around it. So we have to, similar to the last one, you have to put conditions in there with the sale. So essentially what we're doing here is we're making the sale public, but with the conditions in there, there's only, it only makes sense for one person to pick up that parcel of land. And that's when the developer owns all the land around it, right? Because otherwise, if you don't do that, there's the ability of, it's landlocked, there's no access to this piece of land. Someone else could come along and purchase that piece and block all development in the area. So it's a public process, but we need that step to take place to fully negotiate the lease and the next steps.
Yeah. And again, anyone can put a bid in, it just, it has to meet the conditions. So don't think this is only just for one bidder. I want to clarify that. It's, anyone can put a bid in on this property. Then it will be up to Scott and the evaluators to decide it meets the conditions or it doesn't. Correct, Scott? Okay. Questions called? Questions called? All those in favor? Counselor Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
Ten zero. Thank you, Counselor Beck. Okay. New business? No, no, no business. Now we have number seven, move, motion to move into a closed session. Just, can we just go into the closed session first? Yep. Move into a closed session per section 119, 1F and G of the Municipal Government Act of Prince Edward Island. F, F is the conduct of existing or anticipated legal proceedings or the review of legal advice. So we'll review the legal opinion. For F, and in G is the code, the conduct of investigation, of an investigation under or enforcement of an act or bylaw, and the issue is council code of conduct. Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. All those in favor? Counselor Twill, yea or nay?
In favor.
So we're going to close the session? So just shut the door.
Back to the open meeting and then we have to go back to the day of the agenda.
I think Cindy May forgot to put that in.
So, yes. Where is that at?
Well, it would be at the end of the day of the term.
At the end of my closed session? Yeah, it's not there. I know, I know. Okay. Okay. So, we're back in an open session called Order. Now, we do have some business arising from the closed session. We do have resolution. CIO Eleanor Mohammed, could you please read the resolution?
Thank you, Richard. I just realized that I haven't had anyone sign this yet.
Okay.
But I hope this is okay. I have moved by Counselor Beck.
Yes.
Yes. And seconded by Deputy Mary Anka.
Okay.
Be it resolved that Council--
Sorry, Honorable Judge, jump in for a second. Maybe if Counselor Beck, if you just verbalize your response so that it's on the record that you--
Yeah, could you just sign it?
Oh, you will sign. But yes, please.
I will sign in two minutes. And I approve it. Or I move it.
Move it and seconded by, hold on.
I second this resolution.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Be it resolved that Council ratified resolve HR as the investigator for a code of conduct complaint under the Council Code of Conduct Bylaw Number 2020-CC-01, and that the subject of this code of conduct investigation remain confidential in accordance with Section 2510 of said bylaw.
Seven zero. Counselor Stewell is not here. He dropped out. And Deron, Counselor Deron McKinnon were in conflict of interest. Motion adjourned. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by the deputy. All in favor?